What do you guys have? Everybody knows why we're here today. We're going to go over some marketing strategy, let us know what they can do to help us through this. Place it on the ballot.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it was just kinda, you know, there's, you guys are trying to decide if you're going to, you know, place it on the ballot for April, I know it's kind of, I guess, what you're gonna vote on tomorrow. So I kinda just wanted to review, you know, sort of my opinion on and, and, uh, the needs that you guys have and why, you know, I mean, as you know, I mean, I think we all agree that it's definitely something that needs to be done at some point in time, whether it's now or down the road, I mean, you have a lot of issues at this building, as you know, that's why we were here in the first place. Um, so we just want to do what we can to kinda help, you know, and we know that the money isn't in the budget at this point to be able to get what you need to get done. Um, I know the big challenge was, you know, the reason that we were here in the first place was because of the windows, um, which are original to the building and very old, but the problem is you can't really, you know, kinda spirals, cause you can't really replace the windows and then not address, you know, the window units, you know, the way you have your air conditioning, cause you can't, you know, you can't put in brand new windows and then go back in with window units, you know, like you can't, you can't address, you know, you can't address like the water, you know, the tuck pointing issue, you know, you can't put in any windows without addressing, you know, the structural, the tuck pointing issues, all those types of things, so it kinda, you know, it has, um, you know, become, you know, around that million, you know, right around that million dollar project to get all stuff accomplished. Um, we've done a lot of work with, I mean, we've done a lot of these projects in historical courthouses, we do it all the time. Um, we've done a lot with, um, helping, we've done more with school districts, like with helping bond, you know, with helping them pass bond issues. Um, Gina, I brought Gina Bigness here today because she's had the experience, um, she's our marketing person and she's been the one that's really been pivotal in helping us communicate, I know that was one of the things that, you know, you were particularly concerned about, Marlene, it was just, you know, how are you gonna help us, you know, communicate the needs of this project to the public and why it's important and why we're asking for these funds. And so Gina has a lot of experience, we brought some examples, um, that we can show you, some, you know, PowerPoint presentations, flyers, we have a big poster, um, that we, for Palmyra Schools, that's where, this is the example that we brought to close by school that we did. A no tax increase bond issue for them in April of 2014. And they, um, I think it was eight million, I think it was about eight million dollars, um, in upgrades in their buildings. Um, but we put, you know, posters and businesses throughout the city, we helped with, uh, you know, provide flyers and stuff, they did have a committee, um, which is, that's probably what we would recommend for you guys as well, so if you do decide to put it on, um, the ballot in April, you can put together a committee of, you know, volunteers and residents that can help, um, communicate the needs and the benefits of the project. Um, then we can help that committee like with, you know, with the, with flyers and things of that nature to, to advertise. Uh, do you want to, you know, would you like to see some of that information that you've done in the past?
It'd be great. Um, we found that, uh, boards, posters, that will address the issues, let the citizens know what the situation, existing conditions are, about the, the referendum itself, how it works, how the funding would work. Um, so it's a sales tax approach or bond approach, we'll address that on the materials, so they understand. They know exactly what's, what's happening, it's so helpful. So we can do these in, in boards, if you have meetings, things, places you wanna put them up, we can do it in poster format, if you just want it on walls, various businesses can post them as well. Um, we also do the mailers, the flyers. This was Palmyra's for this, this issue, we can do any format you wish, of course. But just a little brochure that goes to a household of registered voters.
You're welcome. Who can't have one of those?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So they can, can read it, understand it, digest a little bit, and then the committee can be identified on the materials. And there's a resource there for those, those folks to call and ask any questions that they might have. Yard signs, any, anything that you want, that you feel will be helpful within your community to, to reach out and let them know what's going on.
Yeah, and some of it, you know, you guys might just, you know, some of it might not be necessary to tell you, it's like something's overkill, it's up to you, but, you know, the big thing I think is that, you know, like if you look in the middle where all the pictures, I think those tell a really big, you know, really good story, and I think, you know, I mean, here, what I talked about too, is that what's not, you know, what's positive is that, you know, what, the changes that you're gonna be making or that you're looking at making are so visible to the public, because, I mean, especially with the windows and the tuck pointing, I mean, these are things that it's not hard to see when you come by this facility, I mean, the issues with the windows, you know, I mean, the, uh, you know, the duck work, you know, all that stuff that's showing now, um, it's very clear that there needs to be, you know, some upgrades. You have your, you know, the damage that the water has caused down in the basement, you know, those things are all very visible, so when you, when you make those changes, you know, instead of, you know, where we've done projects where I've told you, like where we built, you know, geothermal HVAC system and it's fairly expensive and, you know, yeah, you'll, they'll see you drilling the wells, but then once they're in there, there's no, you never see them again, you know, so, what's nice about this project, I think, like DeKalb County is a perfect example, you know, if you go up there, you know, where they did an HVAC system, but they also redid, you know, they did the windows, they redid their whole front yard and landscaping, and it's just, it made such an impact, and then if you call them and they're just like, oh my God, it's all, it's been so great. Cause it was so, it was so well received because it was so, you know, visible improvement, so we would do a lot of, you know, I was kinda going there the other day when we were here and taking pictures of, of windows where they were, you know, broken or taped up, or, you know, all those types of things, so that we can show, hey, we're not, we're not here, you know, you guys aren't trying to, hey, we, we have a use for this money, I mean, it's a need, it's a, it's a need, we're all kinda responsible for this, you know, this beautiful courthouse, we have to maintain it.
And that there's necessity at this point, I mean, if we do something, it's gonna deteriorate faster over time as well.
Right, and I mean, from a timing perspective, I know we kinda talked about when is the best time to put it on the ballot, um, I know there was concerns about, you know, as far as time to educate people about it, and I think, you know, that's what we're, you know, we have the experience doing, and that's pretty common, you know, that timeframe, you know, cause that's when it's due, is the end of January. Um, and I think from a construction standpoint and a cost standpoint, I mean, our best bet is to try to do it kind of over the summer, um, especially with the windows, I mean, it would be about, probably a two monthly time to get the windows in, I mean, for, to get them on site. Um, and then we would, we could be, you know, if it was approved in April, we could have the whole project done, um, and showing, you know, showing the results, my goal would be by August. So, you know, you'll be able to see those results and see that, you know, see the impact that you guys made. Again, if you decide to move it out, you know, that's, you know, we'll work with you guys no matter what the schedule may be. Uh, but, you know, costs could potentially increase, you know, as, as the longer we wait, I mean, we got these numbers really at the end of, you know, end of last year already. Um, and then obviously interest rates could potentially increase as well, just because, as you know, when Larry was here, he said that, you know, they did, they did, if it did pass that to increase, but he didn't think it would be maybe until towards the end of next year, I think he said, or, or, I'm sorry, end of this year or early next year.
What's the timeframe on, on what your locations, things like that, what, how long does it typically take to get something like that put together?
I'd work hand in hand with you folks, Marlene, whomever pulled together our materials, tweak them back and forth so that you're comfortable with the message that's being, being done. And then usually we'll do a mailing, if you want to go the direct mailing route, so the folks have that in their hands a couple of weeks before. Uh, we would suggest that you work with your news media that's here, um, take opportunities to do letters to the editor, to explain the situation. Is, is there a radio station that would have talk radio that folks within the community?
Maybe it's usually pretty good.
Okay, a lot of times a segment there that you discuss it on air is very helpful to the folks. Uh, so if we have everything ready to roll, uh, by the beginning of March, that would be fine. Uh, even before that, if we do, if you want posters out within the community, if you have businesses, we can do that, yeah, we'll pull everything together, but for mailings, usually a couple of weeks, have it in hand. Um, if you have a situation where you can go out and do presentations within the community, we've done helpful PowerPoint presentations and things like that, and Alvin and Two, we can help with that, to help give you a tool to have discussion groups.
One thing we've talked about is doing at least one public forum, uh, question and answer type, if you're gonna give a presentation, as well as possibly doing a couple, at least one or a couple of open houses, being figured out.
Oh yeah, give a tour, that's a great idea, that's a really good idea.
Do a hand thing.
Exactly, cause as Ela mentioned, people don't, don't see it all.
Not everybody's gonna make it, you know.
Yeah, I'll leave these with you, too, those PowerPoint samples that might be helpful, too, to get the message out so the citizens can understand. But we, we have time definitely to pull together a very, very strong, um, presentation and awareness for the folks.
You had a question?
I do, is there, you said earlier, we're, we're at about a million dollar, you know, with their improvements. Is there any way you can just run down a, a fast list of the improvements that are at the top, you know, that need to be made?
Sure. That you can. Yeah, the biggest, I mean, the biggest priority and the reason that, you know, we started talking to the county in the first place was the windows. Um, we are gonna replace the windows, but obviously maintain the historical accuracy integrity, so they'll look similar, um, to the windows that are in there now, but they'll be much thicker, um, you know, longer lasting windows, which is a good thing, cause as you said, lasting for.
Insulated glass.
Yeah, insulated glass, they'll be, they'll be, uh, double pane tinted, so they actually can potentially even get rid of some of the, um, blinds and things like that, because they'll have, they'll provide that, which also provides, you know, um, from solar gain and all those types of things. Um, the other big thing is like exterior facade, like tuck pointing, um, some roof repairs, some potential like waterproofing and repairs around the exterior where, um, we're also gonna be getting rid of like all the kind of existing, like conduit and things like that, there'll be electrical repairs and upgrades, then we'll be adding a new HVAC system to the facility. Um, the main priority for that was obviously because of the window units on the basement and third level. Um, but this, these, this system on this floor is actually, is, is past its useful life as well, so, um, they'll be what they're called duct, ductless split systems, um, tied to condensing units, um, throughout the facility on the roof. And then they'll still have their boiler, cause it's in pretty good shape for backup.
So within that million dollar-ish number, we're looking at new windows, new heat and air.
Heat and air, new electrical, tuck pointing.
New electrical?
Electrical upgrades, yeah.
Yeah, because it's pretty ancient, elec, you know, the electrical system is probably about as old as the building. And the roof, is it leaking?
Yeah, there is issues with the roof, yeah, it's, you can, and that's one of the things, those are pictures that will show, you're, it's actually deteriorating the inside of the facade, like up in the, um, third floor level, so there'll be, um, repairs to the roof for the scuffers, and then also there was water coming in, like when the heavy rains.
So there's a foundation issue?
We don't exactly know if it's a foundation issue, but we think it is, yeah, so that's, that's taken, that's a part of it too, and then lighting as well.
Right, because they're, basically this old lighting, let's look up at it, they don't even make bulbs for those anymore.
Exactly.
And so, they still have them around, but like we're seeing in our office, uh, there's very limited supply.
Exactly, so those are prices, they're just gonna keep going up for those, so we wanna get those changed, and we're actually gonna be going to LED for, for most of it, and then also, um, in the courtrooms will be improving the lighting in there, go back to more of like an historical type chandelier, but there'll be LEDs, yeah.
Looking after the.
Is there any cosmetic work in that number for us?
Yeah, well, as far as like, I mean, this stuff's all gonna be illuminated, so that's gonna all be painted and patched and repaired anywhere where, you know, so yeah, there'll be, there'll be those types of things as well.
And there's like really old, I don't know, okay, so we'll just use this as an example, this kind of wear.
Right.
Not necessarily right here, but.
Yeah.
All of the door, you know, baseboards and around all of the doors, I mean, it's really kind of an aged.
Yeah.
So downstairs, when you come in the stairs, well, that's all blistered and corroded off, is that part of it, do that part?
Yeah, I think.
I didn't know if that was in there or not, cause that, if you remember, that's really bad down there.
Yeah, I think, cause when we, when we change, you know, when we talked about potentially adding a little bit for the foundation and that, you know, I included the repairs for that in there, so we should be covered.
And is also the sheriff's office leak, leaking issue, you know, they always had a wet floor, do you remember? The sheriff's office, there's some sort of water, probably foundation issue going on down there?
I think that they fixed that the last time.
I don't think we've had much issue, don't think we've had any issue with that, it's just out here.
And I forgot to say doors too, I'm sorry, doors, that's the other big one, exterior doors.
That'd be huge.
So all like.
That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
One thing we're running, with the, the doors and windows, uh, the doors especially, there's a gap underneath them a lot of times, we've been having rodent problems in the courthouse, uh, crawling printers and eating the paper, that's no, no joke, but, uh, down the sheriff's office, they've had a terrible time with rodents and things, uh, one reason being, I know there's a painted glass in the, in the lower level, it's broke, I mean, there's a chunk out of it that, uh, a mouse could, you know, stand on his hind feet and walk through if he wanted to, you know, I mean, it's, just different things like that, that's not even, including what kind of weather might, you know, be going through all these broken panes and things like that, uh, energy loss.
Yeah, there is a, the doors will be kind of like back to more of like a, they won't be wood, but they look, they'll look wood, which will look really not, you know, kinda back to more of like what they historically have been, instead of like the storefront. Um, so that would be, so that'll make, like I said, those will be very visible things to the public and the exterior that, that are visible now, that are, you know, pretty obvious now that need to be upgraded. Um, so it's a pretty significant, you know, it's a lot of stuff, but again, as we talked about it, it was kind of like, you can't really, you know, it's like if you do the windows, are you gonna leave the door, you know, so it was sort of, it was domino effect, but it really, it all, it's been.
It's a sad part of it all right there, you can't fix one of them.
Yeah.
Originally, that's kind of what we were planning on doing, doing a step process or whatever, once we got to looking into it, there's just no way to do it, you, you have to, you know, like, so the windows are where the starting point was, that's the thing we definitely knew we had to take care of anyway, cause it's, you know, they just need, um,
So it started with the windows.
Just one thing after another and.
The can of worms, proverbial can of worms was opened, and, and your company, and your CTS, CTS group?
Yes.
Came in and. Okay, thank you. So you guys came in to look at the windows and, and it was like red flags everywhere, basically, and so now you.
We tried to look at it how we could, you know, cause we knew that funding was an issue from the very beginning, um, so we were trying to kind of figure out how we could do a phased approach, or, you know, really sort of just, you know, focus on one thing at a time, and it was kinda like, well, really, I mean, that's our expertise, is really doing comprehensive projects, I mean, that's what we've done, and we've done, you know, we did it Harrison, DeKalb, Marion, you know, um, some of the counties up here, um.
Is it standard to, for it, for things to kind of happen this fast, for you guys to come in and start looking at things and then just bam 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 all the?
A year.
Yeah, I'm saying, it's not really fast, I mean, it's.
It just, okay, now it seems fast, cause I haven't been paying it close enough attention.
I mean, I think our, um, I, I think we met at a conference last February, yeah, so last CCAM conference, right? Um, so yeah, it's been about almost a year now since, you know, we, we've come in, we did the, you know, the preliminary analysis, they went out for a request for proposals for companies, um, and selected us, and we've done our detailed analysis, we've, we've, you know, we've actually gotten, you know, developed a scope, WAC contractors. Um, so it's, it's been, it's been quite a process, um, and they've spent a lot of time, you know, with us and, and getting to this point, you know, and to where we are with the final, with the final number, and now it's kind of like, okay, well now we realize that, you know, it isn't possible really with what, you know, with existing county funds, so, you know, what's, what's the plan moving forward as far as, um, how, how to fund, how to fund the improvements, or when, I mean, I think as you said, and we, we all agree that it's, we've narrowed this down, I mean, I think we've tried to work with you guys to narrow this down as much as we can, you know, to do what we know, we know needs to be done, and, and, uh, I mean, is that, do you guys agree with that, or? I mean, to where we've gotten to.
Have you all been working with us?
Well, I'm saying how we've gotten to this today, I mean, this is kinda where.
You've all been very, very worked with it, exceptional.
Where we need, you know, that where we're at is kind of where we've, it's taken us a while to get to where we are as far as what the scope of work is, and then we all realize this needs to be done.
So the next logical step in this process is?
They have to decide what they wanna do as far as, um, the funding for the project, um, to decide if they wanna do either, you know, your options are the sales tax, um, what is it, half, half?
Half cent.
Half, half cent sales tax, or they also looked at, um, a general obligation bond, which would be about, I think it was an eighteen cent per hundred levy, um, so those are their two, and then they have to decide when they wanna put that on. So those, those are kind of the big decisions, if they wanna put it on by April, they have to sign that by Tuesday. So you guys, that's what you're gonna vote on tomorrow, I guess, but, um.
Make a decision tomorrow.
So then that's what, so then once they decide if it's, it's approved by the, um, citizens, then we would be, you know, we would initiate the project, we would start construction, we would have an onsite project manager here managing all the subcontractors, making sure it gets done, and we're looking at probably, like I said, maybe a five, five, five months, six month schedule for completion. So if it, for example, if it was, like I said, if it, if they did put it on in April and it was approved in April, you know, we would pretty much just start work like almost immediately, you know, upon approval, file contract by the county, we would try to, our goal would be to do it by, you know.
So this would basically hinge on what the voters want?
Yeah.
It all hinges on if the voters wanna approve it or not, basically, because they're gonna be the ones paying for it, right? So, is it, because it kind of like our, I don't think a lot of the people in our community have any idea that the courthouse is in this bad of a state of disrepair.
Right.
Is it normal going into, you know, being this close to possibly having a ballot, um, question for, to have a community this kind of in the dark about, you know what I mean, is there, is it more pertinent to spend more time to educate people on what's going on, so they can be prepared when they see it on the ballot? Or, uh, is it normal to go this way?
I mean, it's fairly common, you know, I mean, with all, with the, you know, with the people that we work with, that this is a pretty common timeline, you know, it's basically, you know, two months to kind of educate people, but you have, it definitely takes work from, you know, the committee and the people to, cause the biggest thing is education, like you said, and the people understand why, what the needs are, and that this is, you know, the county's courthouse, and that, you know, you're all kinda responsible for, you know, keeping it, because if you don't invest in it, it's just gonna, then you're not gonna have, you know, and eventually it will you know, so, that's not an uncommon time, I think another thing is you don't necessarily want to have it be too much time, I mean, even if you move it to August, I wouldn't necessarily start with doing a whole bunch of like edu, you know, because you, then you get people time for, you know, maybe to form opposition, if there is people that, that have opposition, whereas if you have a more of a, you know, tight timeline, it's more the people that are, you know, it's, it's easier to kind of keep the positive people positive, I think, so you.
Keep the pressure people's minds probably.
Yeah, I mean, I would be, even if you move it out to August, I would still, I would, I mean, not that you wouldn't start, you know, maybe like June or something, you know, you wouldn't get, I mean, you can start having conversations, but I wouldn't be.
Start a campaign.
Starting a campaign this, you know, that early on, necessarily. That's just, I mean, that's just our opinion from, I mean, you guys obviously can do it however you think, but.
What does?
But I mean, I think it needs to be, I mean, I'm not saying that you can't start educating people on the fact that, hey, we have a lot of issues, like, I mean, the issues at the courthouse, but, um, they have some people, but, start knowing that.
How much does it cost us to do a, a question on the ballot? How much is that gonna cost the county?
It's about sixty-five hundred.
Does it matter what time of year? April, August, November?
That's, that's about it.
Any question we throw on the ballot as a county is gonna cost us sixty-five hundred dollars. Does it matter if it's a bond issue or, okay.
I mean, the thing too with the, um, with the sales tax versus like a bond issue, I mean, you do, the sales tax is a simple majority, whereas the bond issue's a four sevens. Um, so, it's a little, you know, you have a little, a little more, you know, a little more yes votes if you do the bond issue. And it, and it, and I think it's something where you guys have done the sales taxes before, I mean, you know, you had, so, I mean, maybe that's something people are more familiar with, so it wouldn't take maybe quite as much education, I don't, that's.
If it was a half cent sales tax, how long would it be a half cent sales tax?
It's looking like, uh, according to the numbers we got just yesterday, uh, it's looking like it would have a fifteen year sunset, however, uh, most likely, it would be a fifteen years or until the balance is paid off. Most likely it'll be paid off in ten, but due to the debt.
The debt ratio or something.
Debt ratio on it.
For a rating.
And to get a lower interest rate on, on everything as well, uh, they recommend we push it out to fifteen, and then like I said, it'd be on the ballot as well, so it'd be set in stone, and if it's paid off, and everything that would come into that fund will be dedicated towards the debt service, towards what we have.
Towards repairing the courthouse.
Yeah, you can't use it on anything else, it's gonna go.
And then once the courthouse is paid off, does the tax stop?
Yes.
Yeah.
Even if it's, if it's ten years, if it's fifteen years, as soon as it's paid back.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
People stop paying that half cent sales tax, and there's no need to really put that back on if you guys fix everything that needs to be fixed.
Exactly, there's, we've had no intention of, of continuing, you know, but that's, yeah.
And then the bond issue, if you do a bond issue, then it's eighteen cents per hundred dollars of property taxes, right?
Yeah.
So if you've got a hundred thousand dollars worth of property, you're paying thirty odd dollars in,
Yes.
uh, towards this courthouse repair.
And it's the same thing, is it, it's until it's, until it's paid off. But what's nice, I mean, what, like with the sales tax, what they've kinda said is that you should be, you'll get, they expect that you'll get just about enough for the ten years to pay it off, but because of, you know, the debt, I think, debt to revenue ratio, you know, they just, they really say, just in case, you should say it's gonna go up to seventeen, or fifteen years. But then they, it specifically says, if, the sales tax will expire on, in two thousand and six, or whenever the final payment occurs on the lease certificate, so once it's done, it's done, and I think it's the same, um, you had the same language for the.
Ball language, if you'd like.
Same ball language, ball language.
Yeah, I'll grab it before.
Fifteen years, uh, if approved, the sales tax will expire on September thirty, two thousand and thirty, two thousand and thirty-one, or whenever the final payment occurs on the lease certificates of participation, whichever comes first. By looking at the projections on here, there shouldn't be, shouldn't be any reason we wouldn't be able to have this paid off within ten years. Um, like I said, however, the debt income ratio has to be.
Yeah, and that's for the rating and stuff, so you wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't be able to get rated.
Get a better rate, lower interest rates, uh.
And then with the geo bond, I mean, that's basically, that would be a ten year, um, and then at that, at the ten years, it either goes away, or you could do a kind of, like, you could do a no tax increase bond issue like Palmyra did, for example, if they had, you know, another project or something that they needed to do, you could say, oh, we're, we wanna pass a no tax increase bond issue to do, to continue that, or it would just end, you know, right after the ten years, so.
That's on a general obligation.
On a general obligation, yeah.
That'd be different than the sales tax.
Right, and I, yeah, and I, I don't know which way, you know, that's, that's up to you guys, sorry, but you're leading, but. And I, yeah, and I, I don't know which way, you know, that's, that's up to you guys, it's hard to put your own lead, but, um, but I just think, you know, I mean, my, my opinion is that April is a really, is probably the great time to do it, I think from, my goal would be for you guys is to be able to show the results quickly, you know, for people to see. I mean, that's one thing that's been positive, I think, with the schools, you know, a lot of times when they go like maybe more of a traditional like architect route or something, you know, by the time the, when the bond issue passes, that's when they start doing the design, and they don't even start maybe doing work until the following year, and people are like, wait a minute, like, what did we just vote for, you know, where are our results, you know, whereas, you know, our projects, I think that's one thing that we've been, we've been told so many times with the schools, is it's like, it's awesome because we're already ready, like, if it, I mean, we took that risk, you know, we take that risk, it's like, if it for some reason doesn't pass, that's, you know, that's our risk that we took with you, you know, um, which is where we are with you guys now, you know, I mean, we want, you know, it's, we understand that, hey, you don't always say, hey, if it doesn't pass or anything like that, but, um, and so we've been able to be ready to go right away, and they see it that summer, you know, the su- we do the work over the summer, and the p- the school district, you know, the residents are like, wow, that was, that was awesome, like, we voted yes, and like, and we got to see our results right away, so I think that's a very positive thing, I think that would be a positive thing for you guys to show, um, you know, what you did, what we're able to do, and, you know, it's, and you're giving them that, you're giving them the choice, we're not pushing anything down their throats, we're basically saying, do you guys agree that this is something we need to do or not, you know, and if they don't, then they won't, and they don't have to try again, or, you know, if they do, then, then great, and we can move forward, so, um, I hope that you will consider putting it on the April, and if not, we'll obviously continue to work with you guys, and when, when this, whenever the best time may be. Um, do you have any other questions for us, like, as far as Gina, or any, any of the, um, help that we can provide with, um, marketing or anything like that, I mean, is this kind of the stuff you're thinking it might be good, or?
Pretty much so.
Yeah, and I mean, as far as presentation and stuff like that, I mean, I can assist with any of those as well, and, and, you know, and do tours or anything too, if you, if you would like, um, that's definitely something that we can help with, I mean, we think that this is an important project, I understand it is for you guys as well, so, we're willing to do what we can to help make sure that it's done.
Sounds good.
You're not going to tell me where you're, where you're thinking it all, yeah? You got anything about it?
I can vote today. I can vote today. Doesn't matter, we got it on the agenda for tomorrow, um.
That'll work then.
It's, uh, whatever, I mean, I don't know where I'm at on it, but, you guys have any other?
Yeah, any, I mean, my biggest thing is what concerns do you have, like, what are your, I mean, do you have any specific concerns as far as the project, or timing, or anything like that? I mean, what are your thoughts on, I mean, what would keep you from wanting to do it, or what's your, do you have any hesitations, or?
I think you've given a very, very good presentation, I, I agree with it.
I just want to make sure I address any, you know, other concerns you guys might have.
So the bad place is downstairs, and I just, you know, where them are at, them are on there?
Yeah, because remember when we went, like I told, you know, that, that, like, right now you have the one-
These are, these are out in the hallway underneath.
Yeah, like, you, this is for, you know, you have that, you're, um, asking for the one, two, five, you know, one, one, two, five, you're, oh, whatever, one million, two hundred fifty thousand, um, that is more than what we will need, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, I think we were thinking it would be closer to the one, one, five, you know, one million, one hundred fifty thousand, so, um, again, that would be, again, able to pay it off quicker, um, so, yeah, we will make sure that that stuff's handled.
So the remaining two, five is, like, that's, there's a little bit of hidden cost there, if it's worse when you get into it, that we have to go a little further.
Exactly. But I don't expect that, um, but I think it was just, just for state, you know, just for.
Contingency budget.
Yeah, but I don't, because the only thing is, remember, that was kind of last minute when we talked the other day about
Yes.
that one, or so, so I just, we, when I had just, I had told Larry, why, and I think we, our final costs, our costs at that time were, um, one, one oh nine.
Yes.
Um, and so I had told Larry, I said, hey, before you send it to him, why don't you add just like twenty-five thousand, you know, just extra, just in case to cover us, and he said, probably what I would recommend doing is just doing the co-, you know, the one, two fifty, just to, he said, I know, and I told him, like, I don't expect, I mean, we talked about that, because I think he even gave you like a one and a half million dollar option too.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that was potentially you can do, you know, gives, it just gave you a little bit more cushion, and then again, if you didn't need it, it would just be paid, it can be put to pay off early, um.
I don't know if you were here when I, uh, last time she was up, like, I took her down, showed her the.
Oh, you were, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't remember if you went with us.
So that's why I went back to my guys, you know, because I, I said, they had, they, Jim still feels like, um, a lot of the issues is really still with the tuck point, even in some, you know, even in the-
Well, I do too, I think that's a lot of them.
Yeah, and he really feels like, even in some of those interior wa- you know, because I was like, even in the interior walls, and he said, yes, he really felt like, um, that was really in the tuck point. Even still, you know.
We have to bring them downstairs, let's come in, three figures on the ground, and see where it's coming in, and then employ a gearman, and put some caulking around on the tuck working, and it doesn't, it didn't leave the last two rings to catch.
Yeah, exactly, that's what Jim was saying.
There's no doubt that's for a lot of it.
Yeah, so Jim was saying that he felt that, you know, um, or really a lot of it was that tuck point, and then the roof was, you know, even still, some of the problems even from all the way up there, so.
So can you tell me how much money is allotted for the roof, do you have that separate, not any at all?
Yeah, because I know we talked about, I think that was like seven thousand or something, just for that roof, the repairs.
Yes.
Um, something like that, because we talked about-
So you're talking about the floors and stuff like that, so that's why you get that repaired, plus the leaks the ones in the main wing cordwood, where it mainly leaks.
Yeah, so that's part of the, that we prepared, um, that would be something that if you, if you don't do the project in April, or even if you do, I would recommend doing that at a minimum, you have to do that now right now.
We've discussed that actually, so.
So that would be something where, yeah, so even if you don't, if we post this, post this, postpone this project, or even if it becomes in the summertime, I, we would just assume, pull that out have you guys do the roof, you know, we'll give you the name of the people that we talked to, and have you guys do that. Just, or whatever, even, even if it's right away in April, we just, that definitely needs to be done regardless, you can't wait on that.
Has to be done, yeah.
Um, because it really is causing problems.
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, so anyway, so when I talked to Jim after-
That's why we had to come in here, because we knew the problems over here.
Yeah.
That didn't hurt a lot.
Yeah, so.
As you didn't tell.
Yeah, so after I talked, after we met that time, I took a picture, and I went back to Jim, and I talked to him, you know, Jim, he's our engineer, that's, we got a lot of this work. He's felt really still a lot of it was the tuck point, and he said, putting allows for any of the foundation work and repairs and stuff that needed to be done, so that's when I talked to Larry, so we should be, we should be more than covered, um, and won't use that full amount.
And the warranty will be at yours or who does the work?
Well, there's a one year on the whole entire project, and it's, and we handle it, I mean, we might go, like, we'll still be the ones that manage everything, we'll go to those people, you know, it, whoever does the work, like, they're responsible for, to us, um, to, you know, well, you contact us if there's an issue, and then we'll contact whoever we need to contact.
But that's just a year warranty on the whole project?
Well, there's a year warranty on the whole project, and then there's, you know, extended warranties, and we can work with you guys on how, you know, on how all that works out, but.
Extended warranties cost us, cost us more money to get, or?
No, like, there's extended warranties, like, on all, like, like, for example, HAC equipment, like, all the compressors, you know, the lighting, all that tucks typically has five years warranties on parts and all that type of stuff, um, so, we'll, we'll give you an operation, the maintenance manual, like, after the whole project's complete, that has all the information in there as far as what warranties are. And typically, yeah, like with waterproofing, or, you know, things like, things of that nature, they typically have a a warranty associated with that, whatever that is will be transferred, you know, to you.
And the tuck points from the head to toe, top to bottom?
I think it's, I can't remember how much, I mean, it's in all the areas, like, he figured a certain percentage that needed it, um, which I think was.
I didn't really read that, but, I'm sure he isn't that bad.
I mean, it's wherever, I know it's wherever it's, I mean, wherever it was needed, that's where they, I mean, they had a-
I hope we haven't had issues on all sides.
Yeah, right, and I think that it wasn't on any-
It's not every brick needs or whatever, there's
Right.
points, I know, like, over the, uh, gas line comes in, it's real bad, that's like, up on the end, uh, on the east side, it has a top portion of the minus.
It was significant, I know that, but I know it wasn't like every, yeah, it's not like we're touching every brick, but it's
Right.
wherever there was a problem, and I would say, I want to say, they said it was at least like, I want to say it was a quarter of the whole, over a quarter of the whole building on all sides, you know, on all sides.
Hey. Pretty much.
And I could get that number for you for sure, right now.
Your question on the warranty, I guess, I, we're getting it, whether, you know, to get done with the project, and then all of a sudden, two years down the road, we have water coming in the basement again, is that what your concern is?
Right. Yeah. Well, that's something that we definitely, yeah, that's definitely something, I mean, those are, those are typically extended warrants, those are something that typically has an extended warranty.
That's something we have to get fixed with that warranty on, that much, it's, something's cut out.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's one thing I can, I mean-
Because I don't want to spend that much money on just warranty for one year, if it starts leaking three years and still comes in like that.
Yeah.
Are you all still helping, taking care of?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And let me, and I, and like I said, I'll, um, I mean, we'll, we can formally, you know, really discuss with the, with those contractors, like, okay, what's their, you know, what's their, how they stand behind our work, and then, I mean, that's one thing I was going to say, and, and you can probably vouch for this too, one thing that from me working with CTS that I've always felt like is one of the reasons why it's actually easy for me to work with, I mean, I love my job, because first of all, I believe in what I do, second of all, I believe in my company, and that we're going to stand behind our customers, and when something goes wrong, we're going to step up, or, because here's the thing, in a construction project, I cannot, I can't guarantee, I can never guarantee that there's not going to be issues, there probably isn't going to be issues, you know, but the biggest thing is, is that we're going to take care of those issues, we're not going to come back and ask for change doors for those issues, that's, that's a big part of these projects. And secondly, what we've seen is when there has been things, like Livingston County is a perfect example, and I tell the story, and it's like, it's not, um, we put a geothermal HAC system in their building in two thousand and six, and at that time, the piping that we used was approved and was the right, you know, was piping that was, was, you know, allowable for that application. Um, they had a pump fail, and it kept pumping all night long, one night, they didn't have a, an emergency shut off on it, and it kept pumping all night long, all night long, and it melted, the, um, there was PVC pipe, you know, melted the weld, and it leaked into the courthouse, um, and even though it was five years, I think it was what, five years? It was five years after we had completed the project, um, but CTS came in, um, with our contractor, we redid all the piping, um, we paid the insurance deductibles, and, you know, we took care of all of that for them, and so, I mean, there, it was an unfortunate situation, and, you know, we now use different piping, we now have emergency shut offs, we now, you know, you learn everything, you know, you learn your lessons, we have controls that do that, but, you know, that was something that I was really proud of as a, um, employee, and that, that someone who that was my customer, that we stepped up like that, and I think too, it's like, we look at a county and everybody that, you know, we're very involved with the county organizations, you know, we have all these county customers, if I have a county like you that is unhappy with the work that we did, then I'm going to have a problem, you know, regardless of whether or not, you know, even if you're the only one, and I have ten other happy ones, or whatever, it doesn't really matter, if I have one, if I have one county that's not happy, then it's going to be a problem for us, and so, I can promise you that that's, you know, our, our goal is obviously your complete satisfaction, and that's what we'll work towards, succeeding your expectations as far as the project goes, and, and having you be one of the people that, as at a C-CAB meeting, talking about, you know, sitting up at the panel with me, talking about, you know, your project, and, and how well it went, and, and, you know, that you were glad that you worked with us, so, I mean, that's, that's all I can really, you know, I can't, I can, that's all I can really say about that, is that we're gonna, we're gonna make, we're gonna stand behind it, and we're gonna, we're gonna make it right, and we're not going anywhere, um, so, you're not going to get rid of me today.
Yeah, we have over a fifty percent repeat customer rate too, so we're very proud of that, and shows how we do take care of our customers.
Yeah, I mean, I think Phil Meyer is on there, what, this is like the fourth big, or something like.
Oh, uh, fifth, fifth project with Phil Meyer.
Well, that's kind of how we come to choose you all anyway, I mean, from talking to the commissioners, working out, and things like that, uh, everybody highly recommended people I talk to.
But that was exactly what I, you know, that's my thing, it's like, if I have, you know, I mean, and, and, I mean, Eva was the, you know, she was the president at the time, and, you know, it was just like, hey, you know, this is he, he is still alive, and so, anyway, that's just an example, I don't know.
And then if, you know, if the, if the voters decide to, um, that this is something that they want to fund, um, will you contract, you know, bid local, take local bids and allow local contractors to?
Yeah, and we've tried, I mean, the part of the problem is, we, a lot of it's fairly, you know, a little bit complicated, um, but, yeah, we've tried, and we have tried to get some locals, and we'll, we'll do that as well if there, you know, if there's people that have, you know, that are interested in, or have the capabilities and can bond it and those types of things, I mean, that's the biggest, you know, challenge that we see, it's just, you know, it's fairly.
We had a number of large projects, both at multimillion dollar project at the school, you know, at the school district, and then also at the nursing home. All, all bonded projects, and they did, used it considerable.
Good, yeah.
Uh, were able to find local contractors to at least help in part on those projects.
Yeah, and that's our, that's always our goal as well, so.
So basically, what you guys have to do is make a decision, is it time to put it in front of the voters or not? And if you put it in front of the voters on this go around, um, and let's just say, for example, say it doesn't pass, is that it, can you do it again? Um, can you ta-, you know, take another look at it? Put it on more than once?
My first thing maybe is say we run it again, but honestly, it's going to really depend on there's too many factors to be able to give you a definite answer on that. Hoping it just passes, uh, then you don't have to worry about it, it's, it's the right thing to do, we have to do something, if we don't, then you know, eventually, the building's just going to deteriorate beyond repair. And then.
Then that's an even bigger bill.
Yeah, I mean, and then you're looking at, you know, replacing an entire courthouse as opposed to do, you know, doing basic repairs to, to keep it up and in good condition, just same as you would your house. You know, you don't let it go to the point where, well, we should tear it down and build a new one, you know, it just doesn't make sense.
So.
You do repairs along the way, to do it, to keep it up.
Can you, can you give us an idea of what the maintenance record for the Knox County courthouse has been like over the last, it's over seventy-five years old, I mean, have there been any big projects done to maintain the courthouse, or, I mean, has there been ongoing maintenance of the building?
Yeah, we have ongoing maintenance anyway, I mean, with, uh, within the scope of our, of our budget, I mean, I can't talk for seventy-five years of history, because I'm only thirty-three years old, um, I can't talk about what we've done since, since I've been in office, I know we've, we've done some roof repair, repairs, some measures with that, we repaired, we've, uh, done some foundation work as well, uh, which did help our, help our issue, but apparently there's, uh, more issues than what we had taken care of.
Anything of this scope?
No, nothing since I've been here, I don't know, uh, prior to that, um.
Have you dug back into the records and? Okay, just checking.
There hasn't been anything major, um, I assume when they did the, the current air conditioning system, um, it was, you know,
That was the big thing.
Undertaking, they did do, I, I, kind of, the boiler did, uh, go in, uh, what was it, ten? Yeah, I think.
Ten or eleven, yeah.
Two hundred and ten, uh, got finished seven and eleven, I believe, and that was a, a
Major deal.
Undertaking, I want to say, it's, it's a project, it's a few years ago, I don't know how many that has a tuck working, I don't know.
They did do some, yeah, some tuck pointing, and I don't know when it was. One thing about the, the boiler, I will say, by having a, a newer boiler, that's one of the first things, you know, CTS asks us about, so, you know, what kind of heating system we had, uh, what conditions our boiler in. We're actually good on that, we have a, that's a high efficiency boiler system.
I remember, he covered it.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously, uh, but that, that helped out, that's, that's, you know, going to save us on the other projects, but it's just, um, when it becomes structural issues and things like that, it's deteriorating the building as a whole, it's something you should, we can't ignore it anymore, it's to the point we have to do something. And, uh, whenever gets put out to the voters, it's, it's going to have to at some point, this is something we're going to have to address, it's going to have to be, uh, be tax funded, there's no way we can fund this project on our own with, with current revenues. Uh, whenever it does get on the ballot, I would strongly encourage the voters to support it, uh, if not, I don't know where, where we're going to be or what we're going to do.
How are we going to find the money to do the stuff that needs to be done?
There's a, there, I mean, that's, that's a given, there's, there's no way we can fund this project with current revenues, there is absolutely not.
So, because I won't be able to be here tomorrow, what are, what is what? So, because I won't be able to be here tomorrow, what are, what is what you're looking at? You're looking at, do you want to put a question on the ballot? And then if you choose to put a question on the ballot, to put it in the hands of the voters, then the next decision is what question will that be? Will that be, uh, a half cent sales tax for up to fifteen years or will it be an eighteen cent, uh, bond issue?
We're gonna have to, yeah, decide for sure, do you wanna proceed? Do you wanna put a, a measure on that? Sales tax or property tax, uh, we have to make a decision.
So we'll know.
Half cent sales tax or property tax. And then, once we get past to that point, we, we need to decide when, uh, when we wanna run this.
So, so, and, and so we'll know tomorrow. Was that, is it safe to?
If you wanna run it, wait, well, they had to decide by Tuesday, or, you know, you have to decide by Tuesday, filed by Tuesday, if you wanna run.
We have it on the agenda to, uh, to go for, uh, tomorrow, otherwise I'd be more than happy to, uh, go today, but, sunshine, well, require something, we need to follow our agenda.
So what time is that vote gonna be? Nine thirty? Hold on.
It's starting on its order.
Nine o'clock probably.
Well, I think too, so you've just been sort of forced to do, I mean, not, and you guys and people previous to you have been forced to sort of piecemeal, you know?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, okay.
You know, piecemeal your projects as, you know, as it comes and, and that's one thing that, you know, we, that's what we, you know, we, we were looking at that potential as an opportunity and decided this comprehensive approach is really much more, you know, gives, gives you much more bang for your buck as far as getting the work done. And now's a really great time to finance, I mean, the rates are-
Well, yeah, the interest is-
The interest is a really, was really very reasonable right now. Um, so it's, it's a good time to be looking more comprehensively at, at, at the whole project, at the whole, instead of having to try to find funds or, and, and, and the problem is too, is that you're looking at more significant upgrades. I mean, the windows, for example, is very, is a very significant, it's a very, you know, significant, um, investment and so.
I don't know how many windows we do have. I know we've got a lot, but in the design windows too, you know, it's not, not a small thing, a small undertaking, just a, it's a fairly significant portion of the, of the project cost, you know.
Are you guys getting ready to wrap up?
Yeah, unless you're gonna wrap it up. Oh, I can't, um,
Yeah.
You know, um, give you those examples of, uh, and then just the post.
This is a poster version of this.
Um, but yeah, just, you know, some ideas as far as, and that was a, you know, it was a little bit more complicated. There'd been a lot of renovation work. But, you know, like I said, I use a lot of the pictures that we took and, and the tour, I think, is a great idea, right, and like you said, um, to-
I, I, if, if it's gonna go around, my book, the tour is gonna be-
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So it's visible enough that we can walk through the courthouse?
Very visible.
We can-
You know, this, I mean, well, this tile is still open before, that's called for flood damage, from outside water running in.
Is there just like, if you, are you guys getting ready to end this meeting?
Pretty close.
So, I mean, we're live. Do you wanna just walk around the courthouse and take, show some of the stuff off that's easier to see? That way, 'cause I mean, this video is, it's running live through our livestream on our website right now. We've actually got five viewers.
Oh, wow.
Um, and then it's gonna turn into a YouTube video and it's gonna be, you know, probably an hour plus long, but people who really wanna know what's going on can watch this video and then if we just walk around right now and take a tour, as long as we hold our-
So will they comment for, for tonight?
Huh?
You can tell us to comment tomorrow.
I can throw it up, I'll throw it up as a post on the website and that way people wanna-
That would be fantastic.
Tonight, and that way maybe you can be hearing from people tonight before your big vote and, uh, if you're at home and you're listening and you wanna, you know, this meeting where they're gonna be voting is open to the public meeting and you're encouraged to come in and share your opinion and, uh, maybe take a look at some things. I'm sure these guys would, would like to hear from you if you were a voter of Knox County. Um, this is really gonna be on your shoulders, so, uh, any input that you would give would be appreciated, so.
And that's what Mouse did, is it's gonna be up to the voters, uh, we're, I think we're all agreeance, this is an issue that has to be taken care of. It's, it's gonna be up to voters whether it gets done or not, uh, it's their building, their courthouse.
Well, let's go for a while. Let's go, show them what we're talking about. Are there things that are like really, so I hear the roof is really bad. Is that, you know?
If you really wanna climb up on the roof today, it would-
But you can still see, you can see other, upstairs.
One thing, I mean, even just, uh, we talked about the existing air conditioning. In here, when that air conditioning kicks on, and this isn't even the worst office, it's, it's harder to hear, you can't, it's hard to conduct business when it's running.
That's an accessory office.
Not, not efficient at all, the accessory-
It's terrible in the courtroom and the courtroom doesn't have this. It has the window units.
But, I mean, the west side over there just had a new roof.
We're gonna have to work with it for a while.
So.
Okay, let's walk around the courthouse.
Well, yeah, if you go down like to the statue, you can kinda see where her, um, where the, he and Chloe sits right above her head. Hi, we're doing a tour of the-
We're live video touring.
Um, you can just see like example here, I mean, this is right over her head, so if she gets, I mean, she can't even talk on the phone or anything when this kicks on. This, yes.
The lighting.
And then you have, uh-
This old lighting, right? That's just gonna be more and more expensive to keep up.
Hanging off of the sewer.
Yeah.
And it sucks more power, doesn't it, this lighting thing?
Just like, this is the kind of sample, like, where the windows are being held up by tape and then, uh, you know, a yardstick, uh, so that it doesn't fall over.
One thing to keep in mind too, that, that CTS doesn't guarantee energy savings.
Yeah, there is about, about four or five thousand dollars a year in energy that's looking for it.
Thank you.
Probably walk behind you that way, I don't have to.
Do you have to be on? What is this basement thing you're talking about as far as water and?
Yeah, well, um, well, you can see first of all, like where there's a gap, like gaps under the door, you can see where the water's gotten in here. Started to, you know, damage the, the hole there. Um, there's also, down on the other end, seeing if we can get any more.
Yeah, the other end. And, uh, before you go, I'm gonna show you, show you a window out here.
Okay. Oh, that sure is a broken window.
The, uh, the, uh, window doesn't close either. I mean, it closes that far you can see it. See a gap, it's more noticeable from the inside. Obviously, you can feel the air just roaring through it. Uh, you can see up, you see the, uh, around all the windows, the, uh, glazing. Uh, now it's picking, you know, coming off, all of them are like that. Some are much worse than others and then there's even worse.
Whereas that's the orange, looks like chipped paint?
Yeah, what that's doing, I mean, it's, that's what holds your pane of glass in, you know, that starts chipping-
And you can't replace these panes?
You can.
But they're so old that they're just not efficient, is that what?
That one definitely needs to be.
Single paned glass. And then here's the, here's the air system for the third and first floor, which is-
Yeah, and you can see all the conduit and all that stuff that's running along, like this piping and all that, you know, those, and these, these wires over here.
And this all disappeared.
This will, this, all these wires up here and all that will be put in conduit and gone to be, you know, be disappeared. So all these units will go, there will be other ones, but there'll be.
Okay, and of course there's more wiring, it's just kind of hanging off the top of the roof.
Here it is.
These cracking. And this is kind of everywhere, this cracking.
Oh, yeah. Well, you can see, I mean, they've repaired some of that sort of thing before. Are you down in the back?
This is, uh, also the old lights that you were talking about. I know that you can't get any more, those all need to be, um, replaced.
Yeah, like some of the things we're noticing, like we're noticing about, these are super expensive bulbs now, these old bulbs. And then to just make it even worse, they're using more electricity than-
Yeah, like I don't remember, but there's about four or five thousand dollars a year in energy, energy savings also on this project.
Is that four or five thousand a year?
More water coming in, just leaking from ductwork.
Oh, wow.
Uh, that's never bring you on, but you know.
You can see on the wall where it's just dripping.
Well, you can see that, uh, squeezed past you here. See how, I mean, you can see just flaking off the, the wall itself. That's, that's your, you know, your duct pointing issues and things. This is all getting soft and it's coming out. Your ear, you touch it and it just crumbles. That's a major issue, I mean.
And this is something that's going on in the historical society?
Yes.
Side of the building too.
It's, it's, it's all through this, this, um, like I said, they, they think the biggest part of it is, uh, is duct pointing issues. Uh, we've also got a window, you know, an interior void over there.
Room level. There's our treasurer. Okay, and like, I've noticed like some of the tile, like this, I don't know if you can see it, but it's, this kind of stuff is just-
It just shoots down through there, you can see where it's all bubbling. That's because of the flood.
Yeah, and then you have your, like, the quality of image that they were talking about, um, like around here, there's still, um, like this is a really bad area.
Point, point again, point to work.
Um, this is all this around here.
This is where I was talking about. See right here, it starts here. It goes all the way around.
All the way around here.
So this dark mark, is this water on the other side of this, uh, wall?
Had been at some point.
Water just coming down here. It is water.
There's water down over here.
It, it, it gets up to about two inches deep in here like that, I'm sure.
This is really bad right here.
It's all mad.
Okay, this, I think this is probably the most visible.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stick my finger in it. Yeah, that's-
Yeah, get out of there. Like this right here, how many-
Now I'm gonna have to burn my pants.
Just coming up through here.
Yeah, go. Full of asbestos.
Come up here to these cracks here.
And we did test for that there, isn't it, in the, uh, down here, but there is some in the, um, the window glazing, so we will test after we remove it.
And this is the, this is the door going into the historical, the old historical society museum.
Come back to the other room.
Is this the bubbling you were talking about?
Yes, well, some of it. If you describe, I have, uh, I hear you filming cracks. Does it need to see everything you see?
Here, you've got this wall over here.
So you're looking at the ceiling of the bottom floor, kind of at the end of this staircase and this crack. It just goes all the way, doesn't it?
Here, go in that arm in there.
And then what about this conduit? Is that what this is called, conduit?
Uh, these are, this is for the boiler system here.
Okay, then.
A lot of your, uh,
But this is this like old wire- Because, I mean, this is a old building and so has, you know, these are, look like phone lines and, there's power in there.
Yeah, some of it, a lot of that still you can use, but most of that is actually free.
Hey, it's our office.
See where the water's flooded in the past several years. If, if you'll notice, these tiles here are all loose because they've been underwater a lot.
Right.
And notice the separation between the walls and the floor and the crack all the way up.
Okay, so I-
Pull these tiles right. And that's because of the water that's flooded everywhere.
Is that wet under there?
No.
It looks wet.
No, it's just a blue sign. It has been. But see back here where I'm at, there're pipes, there're pipes. It's from there back where the water comes in from these other rooms and come down here and just destroy your courthouse.
I hope I'm not making the people at home sick. If you're watching this, I'm sorry for, for being so all over the place. This is, this is a lot of information that's taken. Okay, so here's these loose tiles and then-
And that bubbling, there's more bubbling down there as well, which is huge.
Right, and I see this kind of crack in the corner and if we can just-
Cracking the windows.
Get my camera in here and see how it goes all the way up. And this is back to the duct pointing, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
This is-
And look at this, this is where they, at some point, have replaced the pane of glass. You can see the cracking everywhere.
Right, there is just daylight, it's just-
Maybe we got a duct taped hole right there. I mean, it's, it's just time we do something. The window frame itself is rusted.
And it's rusted. I don't, it's so bright right here, I don't know if they'll be able to see it, but that's, that's a rusty.
Apparently at one time, they had the air conditioning window, you know, uh, window air conditioning unit sticking out of that as well.
Wow, this is a lot. Yeah, look, that's a- Is there lots of this in the boiler room?
Uh, no, not as much, the boys, the men's bathroom, I don't think it, uh, the women's bathroom.
I'm not going in the men's.
Another thing, we need to round the building, like where those other back doors are and, uh, you know, replace those, something like that.
And then of course there's the roof retreat.
Yes, exactly. They exceeded courtroom as well too, they're not having a court today, it would be a bad idea.
Do you wanna go to the courtroom?
You wanna show us these leaks from the ceiling, yeah.
Let's do it. Nobody wants to be in front of the camera, so I'm, I'm gonna be in front.
If you get underneath this door, you can't hardly see with the rug in the way, but there's a, some stash right there. Underneath this door as well, from down below, you can see it, uh, see the cracking things. The reason you don't see that is because I had a door going bottom last week. Yeah, we've actually, uh, fixed it a little bit, but it's still, it's out.
Well, then it's that kind of stuff, you just had like exposed lights, I mean, that's, those kind of things will be going to like a nicer looking fixture.
Replace with more historical, historical. Uh, door.
Yeah, it's just kind of piecemealed together, just kinda, you know, just done the bare minimum due.
Different things done throughout time to, you know, with, uh, look at the cracks up here.
So here we are on the landing on the way up to the courtroom in the west side and there's a very sizable crack.
Here's another crack.
One in the window and one on that side. You can tell me the windows are all bad. They're all ripped. It's just time, evil time.
Yeah.
See, a large now up here.
Ooh, right by the power.
Yeah, yeah.
Junction box, right at the junction box.
This side, which side has the?
Has the water.
And it's all-
If we go in like that store, it's on either side.
To go up the roof or?
Who could, yeah, where you're getting it, where it's, where the structure?
Oh, it's on either side, yeah. You can see, I mean, right there where the, where the power is, I mean, it's, it's leaked all along through here.
Oh, yeah.
See the old power box? I gotta show people this, 'cause I was impressed by this. Old school.
And this is a working power box?
Yes.
This is what the courthouse is running off of right now? I think it probably speaks for itself. And you guys are trying to run, you know, technology and-
Yeah, well, I was thinking in nineteen thirty-five, they didn't, they didn't anticipate computers.
Is that for when one blows? There's just some extra sitting right here that whoever comes, comes up to, to fix it can throw it in. And then there's another old fixture. And then here we are in the courtroom.
Yeah, and you can see, you know, that corner. The other thing is, you know, we're all, see where they've tried to paint, um, the light, 'cause they get too much light in here. But we'll be able to have those all be tinted, um, so they won't have to have that be painted.
Yeah, these windows make me crazy. I spend a lot of time in this courtroom.
Yeah.
And these windows have always.
Yeah. And then we'll be, there will be, uh, two fans within all the rest of it. We'll go back to chandeliers at more historical. And you can see a perfect example of why we can't replace this window and then what are we gonna do about the air conditioning? You know, so that has to.
Right, and I cover a lot of court, I meant court a lot. And let me tell you, when these things are running, uh, you can't hear. It's.
Look at every beam at the end where it hooks, hooks to the wall, because that's where all the cracking is on everyone. Make sure you, 'cause that's where it's all at.
And so is this part of the roof work that's up here? Is this more tuck pointing?
It's probably.
I don't know if you can see that at home, but the, there's a crack that starts right above this window and it just kind of goes all the way down. Oops. Uh, to the corner in the, in the middle there. Actually.
I think that's beams. Isn't that horrible?
Yeah, and this beam looks like it like pulls completely away, if you could see that. A lot of, and then there's the, I don't know.
We have leaks just outside of that door too.
I wanna show you, yeah, here first.
More, yeah, back in the, there's cracks. We'll get over to him so you can, just right above this. I don't know if the light's kind of playing.
You can get to one in the corner. There you go.
Right there. And actually, this crack goes all the way down to where we can't see it behind these logs.
Probably goes all the way down.
Probably.
Just needs some work.
There's, you know, another crack next to this junction box. So it's just a ton of stuff. I mean.
Just a ton of stuff.
There's just so much of it.
You see up here where the waters ran down as well. And that's, that's the issue with the, uh, the drain pipe from the roof is actually, I believe, right, right here. Uh, those scuppers they were talking about is leaking around the edge. That's what's causing all this issue.
And there's more of this bubbling.
Mm-hmm.
Take a real close look at it.
You can see, uh, actually in here as well, uh, she was just telling me about this window. I noticed it before too. It's one of the small windows, but a lot of times it'll, uh, of course, there's a reason why. But a lot of times it'll just open. She has a hard time keeping it closed or when, you know, it is closed, it's having a hard time opening it.
These are old.
Yeah, they're definitely old school.
Because of the light, we can't really see the condition of the, um, frame, but it's, it's rested out and.
Right up here though. That's probably one of the worst places.
Wow.
And that's gonna be significant.
And there's a lot of cracks in here. There's.
Yeah.
So we're in the north.
Uh, this would be the.
Northwest corner? Wow. And then down here, it's dripped so much, you can see the baseboards pulled away from the wall. Ancient boiler system.
And just the registers, the boiler itself.
Another, one of these air conditioner, you can see there, there's duct tape. Duct tape is always a.
Yeah, to keep the cold air out.
Wow. Is there more on this side over here?
There's actually a room over here that, yeah, uh, guys have to, just wanted to show where the, where the.
What's interesting is being able to film in the courtroom because I'm usually, uh, when there's court going on, you can't have a camera in here unless you have permission from the court. Every time it rains?
They have a key to get into this room.
And then these are, what is this, plumbing? Is this drain pipes or?
I think that's.
Water pipes maybe. They're, seem like they're too big to be. Ask them if he knows. So more of this bubbling. Just a lot of, that is a lot. It's a lot when you put it all together. I can see where I. Well, I mean, you, so you came in here to start looking at the windows, but.
Did you see any door fan in there? Have you been in there before?
Oh, yeah, that's actually.
This fan?
Yeah.
It's probably origi, this is original, right?
Oh, it's about, gotta be.
With everything in here that.
That's, that's metal. That shocked me too. That's, uh, yeah.
Then here's some more too, just, I mean.
Right, don't, yeah, get your fingers away from there.
Of what's going, you know, what, because of the windows.
More of these.
Damage is happening, so.
And so many, especially in the courtroom, there's a lot of them that, that have been taped up around and stuff, 'cause they, they won't close tight anymore.
Right.
Uh, this one's very similar to that as well. I mean, you can tell how weather's coming here that's done this. It's not, you know, if the windows were functioning properly, that wouldn't happen. You can see, they all, they all draw moisture.
There's rusts on, all around.
Yeah, and I mean, that's just, that's part of it.
You can see it, but there's.
They're not insulated.
Rust stains on what's left of this paint.
There's been several times when we've had snow in the courtroom due to blowing through the windows, uh, simply because they don't close.
Ew, this, this window is terrible too. It's.
They're older. I mean, it's, you can pick out any window in the place and it's gonna be bad.
And then more of this. So there's a, it seems like there's a lot of water coming in and it's coming in everywhere.
See the cracks up on the top as well.
Right, yeah, I saw those when we.
And one thing about too, when we replace the windows, they're, they're gonna be tinted, so we won't have.
These nasty blinds? We get rid of these nasty blinds?
It'll make things, it'll be a lot easier to see in the courtroom, especially since they're doing a lot more video stuff. Uh, they'll be able to see there's.
See what's going on. Yeah, they do, they're doing video court.
You can see right through here where there's been water of some sort.
It leaks up here.
Yeah, it's been.
Yeah, Marlene says it leaks every time it rains.
Yeah.
It leaks in here, which is freaky seeing as there's a light bulb right there.
It's saying, and I, that's where that is, where it's up with the, uh, with the courtroom wall, the, the high part of our ceiling. And that's, and needs tuck work prepared. So, presumably what it's doing is running in through the tuck one and running down and then it's gotta go somewhere.
Are we going into jail?
Yeah.
I've never been in a jail before. Well, not this. Not this jail. This is the.
Thing in here is you can see kinda where the, up here where it's from roof, there are little leaks. The, it's actually like the bricks are popping out.
Okay, so we're looking at the underneath of the roof.
You see where the, yeah, see where the, see where the, can you see where all these bricks are falling out?
Yes. Let me get over there.
As you can, I'm sure you can guess that's not good.
So this is the underside of the roof?
Yes.
That we're standing underneath right, right now? And is this gonna be replaced or?
This will, it won't, this will just, it'll be tuck point and repaired so that this doesn't continue. But the, what I'm saying is, this is the part that we can see, yeah, in the.
What's going on with the tuck pointing?
And then, you know, this could be happening in a lot of the other areas, but we just don't.
You just don't see it 'cause it's got a ceiling covering it.
Oh, and you see, and the bricks are really popping out?
Yeah, they're literally falling in.
Is it, is this one of those moments where like probably shouldn't be standing here?
Yeah, man, I, I, hopefully the, uh, books will stop things, but, uh, you can see, I mean, the, all this, I mean, it just, you know, crumbles.
Because from the outside, I noticed when we were standing out there, that wall looked, you know, kind of clean, but, so the tuck pointing you were talking about is on the inside.
I think, uh, some of this they probably will be repaired, all that. Uh, the rest of it, I don't think is, is as bad. The rest of it's got the, um, whatever plaster stuff over top of it. So where water and things are coming in there, it's bubbling out. That's what's causing that to bubble out. Uh, so you'll know where it's at and they'll fix that.
And this is the old jail. Is this where the cells were?
Yeah, these were, there were two or three cells here. I don't know.
So I would be standing in jail?
Yeah.
In the old jail?
Uh, it used to be, uh, like a cage come down right here.
There was three.
Now it's a storage area.
Yes. Um, here's the, the solitary. Nobody wants to be shut in there.
Wow. We could do, we could, we could do pictures in here. Maybe. Actually, it would. This is a. Are those paper towels holding that thing?
Uh, it looks that way. I'm not exactly sure. I haven't really been in here.
What that does.
You can see, look at this corner over here though. See how that's all peeling?
So this is the old solitary confinement jail, so.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just.
He just calls it that.
Another cell, uh, but.
But it's also the east wall, the east outer wall of the courthouse and it's, obviously there's water damage here too.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And not quite sure what the function of the paper towels are.
Yeah, I don't know. It just keeps them rattling maybe or what.
Maybe, yeah.
I don't see in that look they've got. Okay, I don't know. That's just to open and close that window, I suppose. I thought that was propping the window closed.
This is interesting.
Cracking right through there. That's probably more just settling than anything. Uh, there's a little gap right here there.
Yeah, that's actually a kind of a significant gap. All around this window, this well, basically the outer wall, which is just, it's like more water damage. And down here, you can't see it. It's kind of covered with stuff, but that damage goes all the way down, probably to the floor of this room. Interesting. You don't see those? This is the, the old panel. And if they have electrical work, then you know, redo the wires. So that would do. Okay.
Yeah, and then you can see more of the.
You just keep going. I see the, I see the blue tape holding the paint together. Well, if you have been watching through this livestream, I did not intend for it to be this long, but thank you. Uh, and then I'm also gonna move this over to YouTube.
Nope.
And I'll post this video, um, on the website, nemo news dot net. And if you want to watch it again or share it, um. That would be great.
Oh, dude.
Okay. And if you wanna take a tour, call the Knox County Clerk's Office and set up an appointment. Someone, um, one of the county officials can take you around the courthouse and just kind of show you the problems. And again, they're gonna be voting on whether to put this on the next ballot, uh, tomorrow. So, uh, we'll let you know what happens. Thanks for watching. Uh, signing off for now.